Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Sunshine Coast Regional District Committee of the Hall meeting for Thursday, July 24, 2025. It is now 9:30, and I'd like to call the meeting to order and recognize that the Sunshine Coast Regional District does business on the territories of this Homish and the Seashell We have an agenda before us that's been amended recently, 17 hours ago. Do I have a motion to accept this agenda? Very good, and a second, and all in favor? Very good. Okay, so we're going to move on. We have no presentations or delegations that I can see. We do have a number of reports. I'm going to look for a motion to accept all reports. Very good, and a second, and all in favor? Excellent, so we're off to the races. Here we go. Item 4.1, Food Waste Processing for Curbside Collection Partnering Agreement Amendment. And we have some staff in front of us. Manager Saul, would you like to introduce this for us?
Thank you. I'd like to have our solid waste business coordinator introduce the report.
Very good, thank you. I'm sorry, would you identify yourself?
It's Michelle Martel, Solid Waste Business Coordinator.
It helps when there's a name tag. Thank you, Michelle. Go ahead, Ms. Martel.
Thanks, good morning. In accordance with our procurement policy, a notice of intent was issued to directly award the processing of curbside collected food waste to Salish soils, the only local provider equipped to compost organic waste. With the current contract expiring in August, staff recommend incorporating this service into the existing partnering agreement for solid waste diversion programs. This service is funded through utility fees, which are reviewed annually, and staff are available to respond to any questions the committee may have.
Very good. I'm going to look around and try to get back to my Escribe page. Do we have any speakers? Board? Do you have any, committee, do you have any questions for staff on this? Very good. All right, well, there are things we need to do. It is for decision. Very good. Go ahead, Director Gabiass.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to thank you, staff, for the report and put forward the recommendations for item 4.1. Does that work?
I see a secondor. And if this is an item on the table, open for discussion. Seeing no hands, I will call the question. All in favor? Very good. That passes. Sorry, just for clarification, that was voting for rural areas only? Or was it the whole, the whole district?
Voting all.
Voting all, very good. Any opposed? None opposed? Okay, good, that carries. Thank you. We're going to move on to the most recent addition to the agenda, item 4.2. And our general manager of community services is not in the House today, so I look to my CIO as to who would like to introduce this.
Thank you, Chair. I can do a brief introduction. We have our manager of capital projects, Jesse Waldorf, who can answer any technical questions. So this particular report is in front of you because on July 13, staff identified a sinkhole within the transit parking area of the Mason Road Works Yard. Subsequent ground depressions occurred overnight, prompting immediate closure of our transit parking area. This displaced about 11 transit buses and disrupted the area. This report outlines the site investigation, geotechnical findings and remediation options, and provides a recommendation to proceed with urgent repairs to restore full operation capacity and ensure site safety.
Yay. Any questions from the committee for our CIO or Manager Waldorf? Oh, Director McMahon, you go right ahead.
Well, this is kind of an unfair question because I'm pretty sure you don't know the answer, but we seem to have been fortunate to have many sinkholes. We had them in our landfill as well, and I'm just curious. We have them under our roads as well because logs were used, you know, in the roadbed construction, and they rotted away. So I'm just becoming curious as to how common sinkholes are opening up all over the Sunshine Coast, but I'll bet the CIO doesn't know.
Go ahead, CIO.
I will provide a generic response. I think that our site preparation specifically for Mason Road may not have contemplated all the type of operational use that is currently underway, and so the ground preparation for that particular site probably was not to the same standard we would do today based on the use, and so knowing what we found in there, we would certainly do things differently now.
So it's my understanding it wasn't gyp rock. It was logs. All right, you go ahead.
In fact, it's sort of a good news story. It would have been a lot worse if one of our buses had fallen into a sinkhole. So we're fortunate that the problem was discovered before there was an accident.
Thank you, Director McMahon. Director Stanford, you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Chair. And I would just like to add that the bus drivers were also, you know, potentially in potential for an accident because they often are dealing with the buses at night, so it's it is good news. I just wanted to ask if the whole site is being remediated. Is there still areas that could be a concern in the future?
I'm going to go to Manager Waldorf.
Thank you for the question through the Chair. So the budget that's proposed in this report is meant to remediate the immediate area of Ashfort where the buses are now. There are plans in future to do further investigation, but we're, at the moment, we don't have an answer as to the condition of the rest of the site. So this was just limited to, I think it's about 65 by 150 feet where the buses park now.
I have a question. Do you know what time period this work was originally done? So what year was that yard expanded into that area?
My understanding is that the leveling of the yard was done prior to the SCRD taking over the yard. And so when the buildings were built, foundation work was properly prepped underneath them, but the condition underneath the soil was not something that the SCRD created. It's something that we inherited by occupying the site.
Thank you for that answer. Any other questions? I'm, oh, Director Gabiass, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. And so the SCRD leases the land, which is owned by the province, correct?
I believe that's the.
Right, and so what is the role of the province? Have they been notified, or what's their role to play here, if any?
Right, did the province sell us a pig in a poke?
Yeah, so right now, the lease is a month-to-month because we have indicated to the province that we want to renew the lease, and so we're just in process of doing that with the province. I'd have to see whether or not we've notified the province. I would imagine we have, but I can check back and report back. Thank you.
Thank you. As our landlord there, I would imagine that they could step up and help us in this endeavor, but we do have recommendations in front of us. Any other questions from the committee? I don't see any. Oh, go ahead, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair. I'm not real thrilled about the costs, the $330,000, but I know the District of Seashell has had at least one or two years where we had a number of, you know, logs under road beds out towards Tawannick, that we have a paving budget of three-quarters of a million dollars a year, and the entire paving budget went into fixing like two little sections of road. Because once you start digging, you have to dig it all out, and that's a lot of material to move, it's a lot of disruption, it's a lot of material to backfill. So, you know, we're lucky that it's only $330,000, but it, you know, it's still unfortunate. It's a lot of money that we weren't planning to spend. But that all being said, I'm going to move the recommendations on the, on 4.2.
And I see a secondor, and I'm looking to see if there's any other discussions on this motion. Seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor? I see some reluctant fingers, but yes, that passes. Thank you. Thank you, Manager Waldorf. Moving along to item 4.3, Field Road and Mason Road Electric Vehicle Charging Infrastructure Projects Budget Increase and Contract Award. And we're going to, and we've got online, we've got Manager Van Dlesen. Go ahead, would you like to introduce this for us?
Thank you, Chair. The report brought before you today presents some options for your consideration regarding installation of electric vehicle charging infrastructure for those two sites. The SCRD board policy for corporate greenhouse gas emission states in part that any new vehicle purchases for the SCRD should be zero emission when the lifecycle costs and technology can meet the service needs. Transition to EVs requires sufficient charging infrastructure to support their daily operation. Staff have worked with an electrical design consultant to determine the anticipated needs for charging infrastructure for those two sites over the next two years and five years. The charging infrastructure design was created with a phased approach to give us some flexibility, and the board did approve funding in the 2025 to 2029 financial plan for Phase 1 of both those sites. However, staff have identified there's a potential for some overall project cost savings to complete Field Road, both phases, in this year. Further to that, based on the bids we received, we also identified that the current budget for Field Road is not sufficient to move forward with the project. Staff are requesting board approval for the contract award and required budget increase to complete the infrastructure installation. I am happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, and I tip my hat to staff for looking to find these cost savings and doing work together that makes, that will end up costing the taxpayer less overall. I see Director McMahon has her hand up. You can go right ahead.
Yeah, I'm assuming that the Mason Road charging is only for our utilities fleet and so forth, but doesn't involve transit. Is that the case?
Thank you for the question. Yes, the BEB Transit Bus Project is separate from this project.
Thank you. No other speakers? I'm looking for, yeah, I'm trying to get them engaged, but I don't know. So we do have a recommendation in 4.3, and I'm looking for someone to move that. Very good, we've got to move it in a secondor. Any other discussion on this item? Okay, I'm going to call the question. All in favor? Very good, and that passes. Any opposed? Very good. Okay. Thank you, Manager Van Dlesen. We will move on to our corporate work plan update, and I will look to our CIO to introduce this one. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chair. So this has been an iterative process to present the corporate work plan in front of you here. The last iteration integrated some reviewed corporate directives, and so included here we also have the overall summary of the corporate priorities that align with the board's strategic plan and based on completion. And so we have also integrated the status of the various projects, and we will have also provided a departmental summary. And so we will continue to work towards how we report back on the corporate directives, and so staff are present for any questions you might have on specific projects. Thank you.
Thank you, and I love the way that you've added, since I reviewed this agenda last Friday, you have an explanation within the discussion page that shows us what the colors of each item means, which is very useful. It's a very useful tool. I'm looking to my directors to see. Director Stanford, would you like to pose some questions?
Thank you, Chair. It was very encouraging to see the percentages of how we are moving ahead with our plans for the year, that they actually are happening, and we are seeing completions, and we're seeing things moving through, and I think that's been a huge jump from the last few years, is understanding where we're at on a quarterly basis. So I really thank the staff for the work on this. One of my initial questions is, I would, I'm hoping I can speak to staff later about Eastbourne's water supply expansion and find out how we can communicate out to the community again. It's been a few years, and they are asking questions about where we're at with that project, anything they can do to help the project, so I'll be looking for more information about that particular project.
Go ahead. Manager Waldorf, do you have an answer for this?
Sure. Sorry, through the Chair. We did do some engagement with the community late 2024 and early 2025, but there is a revised grant application that's under works for the design portion of that project for the water expansion, but we're actively looking into some archaeological issues with some studies at the moment. It seems to be a prevalent issue in the area.
Go ahead, Director Stanford.
Thank you, staff. I had been asked by a couple of community members that they hadn't heard anything, so was there any specific direction with the community engagement?
Just that we shared the nature of the project and also took some other community concerns and information back to our design process.
Okay, I'm going to move on to the next question. Director McMahon.
Yeah, I had two items that I wanted to ask about. One is the Wood Creek Park wastewater treatment plant upgrades, which also is in the quarterly report and says that it's being re-tendered in July, so I was just wondering if there was any recent update.
Go ahead.
I believe that it was put out to tender. I don't think there was interest in the way that it was formatted, and so the engineering team that are looking after that wastewater project are currently working with purchasing to figure out what the next steps forward are going to be.
And you had a second question, you said?
Yes, it was about the dock repairs, and I'm just trying to find the line here. There we go. Ports major capital repairs, Helcat Bay, West Bay, Gambier, Eastbourne. And that's being delayed due to capacity, but we need a discussion about ports. We really need a discussion about ports, and I'm wondering when and how that's going to come because we keep pouring money into ports that we maybe can't afford to be maintaining at all. So maybe that's a CIO question.
CIO looks like she has, might have some type of answer. Go ahead.
The items that we have in progress for ports are a work in progress towards a full capital renewal program, like a capital asset management plan, so that's currently underway. And so we were without staff for a significant amount of time, and now that we have staff in place, that work is proceeding, including the capital projects. There is the feasibility study with New Brighton, which is separate, even though it's talking about a ports or hasn't been a decision made related to that and how that service provision may be contemplated, but there isn't an overall directive back to staff to do a service review for ports. And so if there is a desire, maybe an offline conversation with some of the directors about what they would like and some further direction back to staff as to what the board's looking for in contemplation to that particular service.
Follow-up?
Yes, I'm going to say right now I'm interested in the service review for ports, so perhaps I can discuss it with the other three directors who are in the service, but perhaps framing a notice of motion would be the appropriate way forward.
I know that Director Lee is next on the speakers list, but I'm going to ask you to have some patience, and I'm going to ask Director Stanford to have her input on this because I know she's very interested in. because I know she's very interested in ports.
Thank you Chair, I also had that line item, but from an opposite point of view that I am concerned that there's a certain expectation from the community members that access these docks, that they will be fixed. And I've encouraged that expectation and it's difficult to suddenly see that they may not all happen and that the budget isn't there, which is not unexpected. So I'm hoping to see a better sense of when these projects can be completed so that residents that rely on these docks are assured that they have safe accessible access points to their residences. Yeah, I think I also agree, we need to have some kind of strategic direction for ports. I know they're very expensive, they have always been known to be expensive and they've also always been known to be critical access points for community members. So we need to have this discussion in a more wide-ranging scenario rather than always hearing they're too expensive, we've got to do something, there's more to that than them just being expensive. So I am fully in support of moving forward with something, notice of motion. So we can have a more in-depth, wider discussion about these particular responsibilities that the SCRD has and the importance they have to the community, thank you.
Thank you Director Stanford. So I'm, I know that there's an interest in a notice of motion, but we're not going to bring it forward right now. So I will go on to Director Lee, you have a question pertaining to docks perhaps? Perhaps not?
No, perhaps not.
Okay, go ahead.
We have lots of docks up at Pender, but they seem to be floating okay.
Okay, go ahead.
My question is about Line 100, which is North Pender Harbor Emergency Generator. Just a little bit of detail, I'm wondering if the generator is going to be installed in the building and I'm wondering if the generator is on order already, I haven't been able to find those details anywhere.
Maybe staff has some information for the director. General Manager Waldorf.
Unfortunately, I don't have that information or update, but I'd be happy to, sorry, to source that out and provide an update.
Okay, thank you. We have any other questions, any other speakers on the list?
Not on the list.
All right, I'm looking to the directors for any other questions on this item. I have a question pertaining to the tool itself and I want to know that because we don't interact with staff on a regular basis, I'm going to look to the CIO and ask her impressions of how this tool is being accepted by staff.
I have not canvassed all staff, so but those I have heard, including some of the general managers and senior managers, is that it's providing a clear focus for staff and they have a little bit more, they feel like they have more direction as to what they should be working on versus, and knowing what not to work on. And so that is part of the objective, is to make sure that we're proceeding with the board's important work and focusing on those types of things. So this will also be an important tool as we head into budget preparation as to contemplating new initiatives and what we have capacity for and what we don't have capacity. So I think overall it's well received, it is shared with staff and overall broadly staff are looking at it. And you know, staff from various different services throughout have commented that they appreciate the tool because it brings everything together in one centralized place.
That's kind of what I was hoping to hear, I do, I think that it's a great tool and it helps me to see exactly what's going on. And we have a question from Director McMahon.
I too like having it all in one place, I think it's really helpful and the layout, it's much easier to read than previous tools that we've had, so I really like it. I did figure out that dark gray meant that the project was finished, it didn't actually say so in the color coding thing. Could we find a more cheerful color? Like, dark gray looks gloomy, but we, we're, it's finished, it's like yay, maybe we could put little starbursts or something, I just...
Yeah, can we animate it?
But thank you.
Little fireworks, that would be great. Yeah, it's, it is interesting to look at, but I figured out that the gray was completed when you look at the percentage done, it says 100%. All right. My chair's writing little notes, my vice chair. Any other questions on this item? This is for, oh, go ahead, directors.
Yeah, thank you, thank you Chair, and there's a notice that there's quite a few projects, especially in infrastructures, that are seeing delays due to vacancies and I'm just wondering if there's any update or, you know, what's the outlook for, I know it's been a challenge for some time now, but any good news would be appreciated, but...
Yeah, I looked at the CIO and there are, I was wondering if we can get, do we get any news on new hires? I mean, it's not necessarily something that is shared with the public, but it would be interesting for the board and this committee to see where the vacancies are and whether or not there's been recent backfilling. And because I know there are a few different positions that have been filled recently. Assistant Fire Chiefs in Half Moon Bay and Roberts Creek, I believe. And I know that there are a couple of, last time I saw the CIO, she had her fingers crossed for a hire and I was wondering if you can eliminate any of those, any of that information.
So we have some information on the biannual report today from HR related to recruitment and several other type of statistics. We don't typically speak of specifics in public, what I can say is we do have, in infrastructure in particular, we do have a manager replacing our manager of operations, we've done a little bit of restructuring there. And so they're starting in September and we are actively recruiting for many other positions. The types of positions here too are not operational that are typically impacting these type of projects, they're senior type of management position. And so we've got some positions within, looking to capital projects and project management, so working with some of the GMs to work through that this August as well. As far as CFO recruitment, I don't have anything to report currently.
Thank you. No other hands, and so we're going to move along to the Q2 Corporate Financial Report. Manager Wing, would you like to introduce this?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So I'll just touch on some, some high-level items from the report. On a consolidated basis, overall, both wages and base operating expenses are trending slightly lower as a percentage of budget from last year. And that's contributing to an overall surplus that is trending slightly higher. We measure that against total revenue, so that's trending slightly higher than last year as a percentage of total revenue. So overall, the position from a variance perspective is slightly better than Q2 of last year. For user fees, which are monitored closely for variability in certain functions, there are a couple of functions that are reporting unfavorable variances that are trending lower than previous years, that would be transit and solid waste. For transit, that's related to fare revenue and there is some seasonality within that service, so we're watching that one closely. It is contributing to an overall deficit in the service right now. But there's a lot of factors and timing differences involved in that particular service, so it's somewhat immaterial at this point. We'll keep a close eye on it and report more in Q3. For solid waste, that variance in user fees is being offset by lower contracted services. So if there's less waste coming over the scale, there's less, you know, ways to manage the landfills. So that's been offset and that service is actually in a fairly healthy surplus position. The other significant variance in user fees is with building permit fees. And there was a fee increase in January that's contributing to that, as well as construction values trending higher than last year. So fees for building permits are based on construction value and so we see higher trends, generally there are higher revenues as a result. There's five deficits overall that we're reporting right now at Q2. None are what I would consider concerning at this point, they're all relatively moderate and can likely be mitigated or managed throughout the course of the year. There are, with fire departments, there are all of the reporting surpluses right now, there's a timing difference in the budget with respect to new compensation model coming in August 1st. And it's looking as though those will likely, at least one, two of those will be reporting probably deficits at Q3. So we'll have a closer look at those and look at putting some mitigation strategies in place right away to mitigate those.
Thank you, Manager Wing. I'm going to look to my committee, this is for information. Are there any questions based on these, on this report? I don't see any hands except for my vice chair, go ahead.
Thank you Chair, and thank you for indulging by sharing your microphone with me today. I actually don't have any questions, I just, I want to say thank you to Manager Wing because this, this report is quite clear, even if you don't drill into the service level sheets that are attached. And to be honest, with the sheer number of them, I generally don't. So I appreciate having the staff report up front that has, you know, here's the gist of what you need to know, it's very clear, it's very concise. And I appreciate staff taking the time to put it together and keep such a close eye on these deficits to make sure that there's mitigation that can be done when possible. That's all I had to say, thank you.
Okay, good. And this is item 4.5, going once, going twice. And we'll move on, thank you, Manager Wing, we'll move on to 4.6, which is also your your bailiwick, I forget the word.
Report?
Yes, your report, thank you. So it's the Director Constituency and Travel Expenses for the period ending June 30th. I don't think you need to introduce this, does, do the directors have any questions about this report? I don't see any. So I'm going to move along to 4.7, which is Manager Crop and the contracts between $50,000 and $100,000. Thank you, Manager Wing, that's your job, right? And so we're looking at, for information, the contracts that we spent between $50,000 and $100,000 on, in Q2, April 1st to June 30th. Does anything jump out at us here, Manager Crop? You can go ahead and introduce this if you wish.
I'm just happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Very good, looking for questions? We have a quiet bunch this morning.
We're just ripping through this agenda.
Oh, I'm trying to get people to talk, but it's just not working. I don't have any questions either, thank you, Manager. We're going to go on to 4.8, Corporate Administrative Services Semi-Annual Reporting. We've got a number of Q2 reports coming up. So we're going to start with Corporate Administrative Services and I'm going to look to our CIO to see if there's anything she'd like to highlight within this report.
Just wanted to highlight that for Corporate and Administrative Services, we do a biannual report, not quarterly, so there's a lot of information here. Staff are, some of us are here to answer any questions and we, if there's anything that we need to take offline. We have updated some statistics in here as well and just wanted to remind overall with the board and public that we are working to modify our template for quarterly and biannual reports and look to have something likely for 2026.
Director McMahon, you have a question?
Actually, I largely had a comment, which is that I have been trying out the new search function on our website and by golly, it works. I can actually find things that I'm looking for now, which is novel and very welcome. The, oh, I know, the FOIs. This is, this has sort of come up before, so say there's a fire and it is deemed suspicious and then you see it in the newspaper that this will be investigated, but we never see the results of the investigation. Is there a public way that people can get the results or if they want to find the results of a, say, a fire investigation, do they have to file an FOI?
Interesting question. Oh, I thought you had one, oh, you gave it to me, okay, go ahead.
Thank you Chair. Residents and the board alike are able to make an FOI request at any time and it would really be the parameters that determined whether or not it went through the formal process required of FOI. So it would just be a simple request to our privacy coordinator in-house and any information that could be released would be released and anything that would require going through the formal FOI process would be initiated at that time.
CIO, you have a follow-up on that?
Yeah, I also just, we can report back because I do believe, and we'll have to verify this, the Office of the Fire Commission is typically the one that reviews some of the investigations and so we may or may not be the holders of the investigation file, so.
Very good. Any other questions on this one? I don't see any hands up. So, 4.8 done, 4.9 for information. General Manager Rosenbaum is not in the house right now, but it is the Infrastructure Services Department Q2 Report. And I'm looking to see if the committee has any questions on this report. I hear grumblings. Oh, are you, oh, sorry, Director McMahon wanted to reverse, so we will bring that, I moved that we, we'll bring it back onto the table.
Sorry, well, there's a lot of reports here to scroll through, but one of the things I had flagged was on page 176 and it was the number of graduated return to work files we have. There seem to be a lot of them, is this, is this unusual or?
176 of the agenda, yeah. Go ahead.
Unusual compared to, well, yeah, so I think, you know, some of the things that we review with our claims administrators is how we rate compared to other types of government entities. And so we do get those statistics at the end of the year and so we can always come back and report back as to what our rating... and report back as to what our rating is. I know some good news in this particular report too is our core certification and so that is going to generate a lot of good savings and it really is improving our safety in the workplace and so that's also going to help just the culture within the organization. And so I can't, I can't say whether or not we're high, but definitely there is always a benefit to the organization. We always want to work with employees to bring them back to work, so that's always our hope.
Go ahead.
Actually, it would be interesting on some of these statistics to see how we rate relative to other local governments, you know, how we're, how we're doing. I realize in many cases it's not possible because regional districts are such a motley bunch and they're all different from each other, so some of the metrics are hard to compare, but things like, I think, you know, employment is probably possible to measure and it would be nice to know.
Go ahead.
As we start to develop our revised reports and what we're measuring is going to be critical because we, they have to be meaningful and we have to measure against something. There's a lot of data. I don't know if I would classify these as statistics. And so we need to understand what's important for the public and the board to measure against for our service levels because this is a lot of work cumulatively for each division. And so that might be part of the discussion we need to have with the board and with divisions as to what are the important metrics that the board and the public need to see and what are we working towards and what we're trying to improve because just including data without some objectives isn't always the best way forward. So I think that's part of the contemplation. That is part of the contemplation of the new quarterly and reports. So any feedback from directors would be helpful.
That's good. That's a good ask. All right. So if, if we want these reports to reflect what we are interested in, we have to let the CAO know what it is we're interested in. Are there any other comments on, this is, now we're back at 4.9, 4.8. And sorry to rush you out of 4.8, but I'm going to go to 4.9. Oh, Director Lee, you have a question? You have a question on 4.9? The Corporate Administrative Services? Sorry, Infrastructure Services?
Yes, my question is on 4.9, so if anybody's on 4.8, I can wait.
No, we're done. All right.
Okay. I have a couple of comments on it. First off, I really appreciate the write-ups that are in here. It's, it's very nice and I'm actually capturing them and starting to put them under subject because that's the way I like it. But my question is on 12 of 29 or page 198, depending on what you're looking at. The Dogwood Reservoir, it says that it's going to be complete on Q4 2025. Is that the whole reservoir done on Q4 2025 or is that just the design and the plan? I know it's a tough question.
I'm going to look to staff and see who would like to take a stab at that one.
We don't have an answer today.
There's a stab.
Sorry, we're a little short-staffed today. So we'll have to take that offline and we'll report back.
I'm sure Director Lee can get an answer from staff sometime this week or next week. Very good. We have some other questions? Director Stanford, you have a question?
Thank you. I, I am a little confused here. I'm on 4.9 Infrastructure Services and I'm looking at page 15 of 29 and these are development applications, which I thought are more implying, but my question I have through the chair is on the second pie chart, it's development applications per area and only four areas are getting any kind of development applications according to this pie chart. So I wondered, is there no applications happening in some of the other areas or is there something missing on this pie chart? And I totally understand if we have to pick this up at a later time if staff are available.
Thank you, Director Stanford. I am, oh, okay, so in the online agenda, it is page 201 and the chart at the top.
So, so there's a chart at the top and then there's a second pie chart below it.
Second pie chart. I'm going to go to the CAO for some explanation here.
So these are for water-related development applications, so reviews for those. So they might not be synergistic to what's happening in, in planning and so these are active applications for, say, water and infrastructure-related reviews.
My question is that there's, there seems to be an area missing and which area is that?
I, I think I understand now. If this is just specifically to water, anything extra to deal with water, then I understand why it's in infrastructure and that it is entirely possible that there aren't applications from those other areas. I thought this was general applications. That was what my confusion was.
All right.
Is there explanation on that chart?
So, sorry, Vice Chair is pointing out that there's an explanation at the bottom of the chart. That might, go ahead, Director McMahon.
Yes, I believe that the, that chart came about because we were curious as to how much demand there was for new water connections and, you know, and that's a concern with the water supply. So hence that report, I was just going to mention that sometimes the system works. So I had an email the other day from a very anxious person in Wood Creek Park who's selling their house and wanted to know the situation with the wastewater treatment plant. And so I was able to go into the quarterly report, pull out the part about Wood Creek Park, and then I successfully used the search engine to find the Wood Creek Park wastewater page on our website and I was able to send that information too and I felt really effective. So sometimes the system works.
I haven't had the same luck, but I'm glad you have, Director McMahon. We have speakers list. Director Lee, go ahead.
I, I'd like to start by saying I've had a similar experience to Director McMahon. With that search engine being able to supplement what you do get from the report, you can very quickly answer constituents' questions and your own questions. I consider we've made a pretty good step forward here. But my question is another one that might not be able to be answered because it's a tough one, but I'll try it again. It's regards to the Fire Flow Action Plan. It's 11 of 29 or 197. And when we first started on the Fire Flow and we changed the bylaw, we were going to see if we could put an interim process in place where we could do small subdivisions in existing water services. So say if someone was going to divide a lot in half and they had 30, and the fire department agreed they could handle it, we could go ahead and do that subdivision. I've never seen an answer to that and I do see now that this Fire Flow Action Plan Development is talking about late Q4 2025 for Phase 2. And at that point, we're just talking about identifying and prioritizing system upgrades. That's a long time since we started this and actually put a hold on those small subdivisions. Is, is there any hope of getting that administrative function together so we can at least get the small ones going earlier?
This is a good question and I wonder how many of these small subdivision possibilities have been delayed because of this. CAO, do you have some questions? Do you have some answers on this?
I'll speak to the process. The board had changed the bylaw to be prescriptive and they changed bylaw 320, including 422. And so I am not sure an interim solution is actively being reviewed. I know there has been some requests by people to see if we could do an interim, but that would diverge from our bylaw currently. And so we have, if there's a desire to review that before Q4, I'm not sure if we would make any meaningful progress to that based on that particular timeline. It would likely mean some different type of options and exploration. It would be a different undertaking of work and whether or not it would be a benefit to the actual long-term plan, I, I don't know. I'd have to speak to staff about that. We're also working with the District of Seashell because there's a little bit of a nuanced change there because they have a different process than we do and have different bylaws. And so we are working with them as to various tools that could be contemplated. And if there's any change to that, we would come and report back to our board on that too.
All right. Thank you. There's a follow-up from Director Lee.
I do remember when we agreed to change the bylaw, but we were under the understanding at that point that there would be a workaround possible. I believe that's what's happened. I'd have to go back and review that entire process, but my, my memory said that's what we had talked about before we agreed to change the bylaw. It's, it's actually affecting my area a lot because there's a lot of my area that doesn't have enough Fire Flow. And that's why the earlier question about the Dogwood Tower, because that's going to alleviate some of it. So I don't really know what the overall plan is. I guess if I want to know, I'll need to develop a motion and present it later, I think, unless our CAO actually did offer to give me a quick update, give us a quick update.
CAO?
I could have an offline conversation with the director and get some more specifics and we can work through what could possibly be a solution.
I think that the entire committee would be interested in hearing what you have to say about that. And I'm going to say that we're taking that offline and I'm going to turn to Director Stanford. Do you have a question? No, oh, sorry. Okay. Is there anybody on the speakers list, my vice? Director McMahon, go ahead.
Yeah, I, transit, it's, it's, the transit ridership data lags so much, it's kind of frustrating because I, I long to know.
Is this on 4.9?
4.9, am I into the wrong report?
You're in 4.10.
I moved forward to community services. I'm bad. You can slap my wrist now.
You know what? Nobody else, so you might as well carry on.
If there's no other questions on 4.9, we can move on to 4.10 and take that question. All right. I don't know, I see no, nobody.
Perfect.
There we go. All right.
Go for it.
No, I'll just, I'll be very interested to see what the statistics are like, you know, at the end of the year, but I was at Sunny Crest Mall the other day and an entire tourist party got off the bus, you know, complete with tour guide and, and a whole line of people. And so it looks to me like our transit is being pretty heavily utilized.
Is that a statement or a question?
Statement.
Excellent. Okay. I do, I, I have a question about ridership. If we're looking at page, oh, damn it, this thing's so small now.
Manager Ben Wilson is online.
Very good. Thank you. So I see that the ridership in Q1 does not match up very well with Q1, Q2 of last year. This blue line here, what page is that? I know.
Page 40 of the report.
Page 40 of the report. And my question is, is the data from the S-PASS is included in this ridership or is it just paid fares? Is there, oh, Manager Ben Wilson, you have an answer to that? Maybe he doesn't know what I'm talking. Oh, oh, we have, sorry, we can't hear you, Manager, but I'm going to.
Right. Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the question. The information I have is that the S-PASS data and ridership is included in the overall data that you have in front of you.
Okay. Okay, so ridership is down during that period? Well, that is what it is. Any other questions on this report? Infrastructure, or sorry, community services, 4.10. I don't see, oh, I did have a question. The water usage at the Gibson's Area Community Center, if you look on page, what page is this? Oh, page 23 of 47. When you look at Q1 back in 2023, no, that's not that one. Oh, no, sorry. Quarterly water consumption in cubic meters, page 24. Gibson's in 2023 had a massive amount of water usage and then you see it drop over the next two years and the Q2 2025 water consumption is extremely low. And I was wondering what happened to save that much water at the Gibson's Area Community Center?
No, thank you for the question. In early Q1 of 2023, we had a automated valve fail on our refrigeration plant. And so later in the quarter, staff were able to identify that there was actually a significant increase in water usage from that failure. It was a bit challenging to track down because as you can see from the data in Q2, the water usage dropped back to kind of historical normals. So it took us a bit to identify it was directly related to the refrigeration plant and in Q3, we were able to actually find that valve and have it repaired. So that has restored our water to normal usage. Some of the effects that you're seeing in Q2 of 2025 is when we were trying to troubleshoot and find that leak in 2023, we also identified some other kind of minor leaks that were repaired and have resulted in additional savings of water.
Wow. Thank you. Thank you, Manager. It's really interesting that this bar chart tells that story. That's great. I'm going to look to Director Lee. You have a question about our Community Services Department?
It's kind of a generalized question. I noticed that the Vine Brook Bridge design, final design and cost estimates are completed and it, it's sure not essential that I know that, but it's kind of a curiosity thing. I like to, I like to know that kind of stuff. Is there any way, like if I'm curious about something like that, I could, or other directors were curious about that phase, they could get that information? Is it put on the web somewhere or?
I'm sorry, Director Lee, can you say what information you're looking for again?
It's the, okay, I'm looking on page 6 of 47 and it's the Vine Brook Bridge finalized design and cost estimates completed. That, that's of interest to me. Kind of curious what the future holds for us. And I was wondering if when that, when we get to that phase, is there some way that directors could get that information if they were interested?
I see staff conferring and there's an answer.
Whenever there's a failed asset, we always undertake a review. That's just part of normal operations. And so unless there's a need to present operational information publicly, we do provide, say, in quarterly reports, status of various operational projects, but we don't have a matter, of course, on disclosing all of our operational information. If there's a curiosity question, I just, I would have to understand what, what specifically the, the purpose. the purpose is for the information and what the business needs and governance needs is. So we can take that offline.
Go ahead, Director Lee.
Curiosity question in that if we knew what the bridge needed to look like and how much the bridge was going to cost, perhaps the community wants to step up and do it and move the, move the due date forward.
Yeah.
At that point, it becomes something that you'd like to do prior to the budget cycle because the next time we're going to see this is at the budget cycle. And I'd have to get prepared after the budget cycle if I wanted to do that, or the community wanted to do that. So that's, that's where my head was at when I asked the question.
Well, you're representing your community, and they, they want you to voice their concerns about these things, right? And so that's, because that's our job. CAO, would you like to say something or?
Offline conversation.
Offline conversation. I'd just like to put my two cents worth in is that I've been talking about Cliff Gilker Park and the bridges there, and my community's been looking to have something done there. And I've already expressed my community's desires to staff, and they know where, they know where I stand on that, but I'm not going to bring that up right now. You have a question?
Except that you did, Chair.
Director.
You say you're not going to bring it up after you finish speaking about it. I didn't want to chime in during the meeting because I felt it was an offline conversation, but when you went down the Cliff Gilker Road, I have to step in, I'm sorry. We have the corporate work plan that sees, you know, the SCRD bringing projects that we've asked for, you know, through the pipeline in sequence of when resources are available to work on them. I appreciate the Pender Harbor community and the Roberts Creek community, and all of our communities are enthusiastic about park assets and like they want to help, they want to, they want to see all of, every single one of these parks projects move to the top of the list. And so it, it becomes a, how can we active, you know, how can we partner with community when appropriate? How can we, you know, what, what place is there in these processes for partnership with community? You know, if there's 500 different permits that need to be obtained before a bridge can even be replaced, the community can't really help with the permitting process. And so I think, you know, as we talk to our community groups or outside agencies, I think knowing what nuances there are, like, it's just a bridge. Why don't you just cut up a couple trees and put a bridge in? It's not that hard. Like, we could do it in a weekend.
Yeah.
Not legally, we can't. And so I think there's a lot of nuance and things that, to the public, look like frustrating slow government bureaucracy. And in a way, they are, but they're not necessarily our bureaucracy that we have to be working through. So I think these conversations are important, but I think we could also spend an entire meeting discussing the frustrations that we have with our own processes and other government processes. So that's, those are my thoughts, and I see Director Lee's hand up.
Thank you. Yeah, before I, before we go on, I just wanted to say that before I took this role as, as committee chair, I did look online to see what it, what it is a committee chair is supposed to do. And one of the things a committee chair is supposed to do is to, is to encourage conversation and on, on subjects. And so I think I've done my job here. And I'm going to go on to Director Lee. You have a question?
Yeah, my, my question was actually a little different than the subject we're on right now. It was because we had funded up to a certain phase, and we had a deliverable at the end of that phase. And I have no idea what the deliverable looks like, so hence I asked that question. That's, that's why, when you have a project and you stop and you fund it that far, and you got a deliverable, I want to know what, what the result was to see if I support the next phase or not. And so if earlier I get it, the better I can inquire. And that's all. So it wasn't, wasn't this one in particular, there was a couple other ones, too, that I got curious about. Anyways, I think the answer was no, and that's the way it is.
I think when Director Lee has a chance to have a face-to-face with our CAO, maybe you can get some of those answers or express your community's desires. Are there any other discussions on this particular item? I will move on to four point one-one, which is planning and development, Q two report. General Manager Hall, you are available for questions, and I will turn to the committee to see if they have any questions on this report. Looks like everybody's happy with your work. That's great. Director McMahon, you go right ahead.
I'm sure this question can't be answered, but I couldn't help notice the spike in bylaw complaints in Area E. We seem to be very busy. Are we scofflaws in Area E, or is it just random?
Be careful what you ask. Go ahead, General Manager.
Thank you, Chair. I, I can't, I can't comment on the director's hypothesis there. I can say that staff do follow the board's policy about the management of complaints. We treat them seriously. They are followed up on. The anonymity of complainants, who do you have to provide identity as part of making the complaint, is protected. And staff are not, staff are certainly very busy with bylaw enforcement, and this time of year is with more people around tends to, tends to see an increase. Thank you.
Well, there's something about our bylaw complaint system that I think needs some clarification, that although there's, that there's no such thing as an anonymous complaint within our system, that there's confidential complaints, but they're not anonymous. And that if someone brings forward a bylaw complaint to the SCRD, that their identity is in confidence, but it's not anonymous. They are known to. And I'm, I'm not sure if that information will ever become public. Is that an FOI-able thing? Is it? Or I was wondering if the, if staff can, can expand on that question. Is, if some, if I make a complaint and, and my name is in confidence, is there a point in time when the SCRD would be compelled to release the name of the complainant?
Thank you for the question. The SCRD does not release the information related to individuals that make bylaw complaints to the subject of those complaints. The only time when I would foresee that information being shared is if the matter was escalated beyond the SCRD.
It's a court.
So something like a court proceeding, yes.
Okay. Okay, so it looks like we're done with the planning and development, and we'll move on to the last report on our agenda today, which is four point one-two, emergency and protective services.
Director McMahon has a question.
Oh, we have a, you have a question even before I turn to our, our acting senior manager of protective services? Do you want to let him introduce this, or?
Does he have an introduction, or is he here for questions?
No, no introduction. Okay, go ahead, Director McMahon.
Well, I just, it, it's a beach fire time of year, and I was just wondering, are we getting a lot of complaints? Is there any public service announcement we want to give here about beach fires? And I know they're a perennial problem on Ocean Beach Esplanade, and I see complaints a lot, especially on Facebook.
Go ahead, Chief Michael.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I think a lot of thought has gone into that, for sure, and a lot more of a public understanding and appreciation when it comes to banning a fire. So a press release was just issued, for example, some social media campaigns, signs have been placed, we've done additional patrols. We've received only a couple of complaints thus far, but acted on them swiftly and done some education to ensure that we don't have repeat offenders.
Have you handed out, has the RCMP handed out any tickets in our area this year?
From my understanding, no. The fire department is generally fairly light on, during the first week. You may not be aware, however, as, as time goes on and public awareness increases, we have that option at our disposal. When we get into provincial states of emergency, we then turn to zero tolerance, and there would be no excuse, no reason why that anyone should be having a fire, and the RCMP are then requested on a priority basis to come in, issue some expensive reminders.
Thank you. Yeah, I think the public is becoming more and more aware of the consequences of contravening this ban. And for education purposes, the, there are some things that are allowed, propane-powered fire rings, barbecue briquettes, propane barbecues, these things are allowed underneath the act. But tiki torches and fireworks and other things. And you can get the big ticket for improper disposal of a cigarette butt. So, but I think the public is becoming more aware in this day and age that, that fire is a tool that can get out of control, and we need to be really aware of it. Does any of my directors have questions about this? Director Lee, go right ahead.
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions. Is there a fine limit or prescription on having fires and continuing to do so when you have to go wandering around putting them out, telling them to stop? Can we find them a decent amount to help them make up their mind? And as well, do we have any public guidance? Because there is, when someone starts a fire, they, they become responsible for any damage that occurs if it gets out of control. And those, that's the kind of incentives that we should be making sure everybody's aware of when they start illegally lighting fires. So I don't know if it's anywhere and how to find it.
Oh, I think Chief Michael has some, some of the numbers for us.
I don't have any specific stats on this, but, you know, I'm not aware of many ongoing repeat offenders despite our visits and reminders and then ticketing. From a bylaw perspective, my understanding is that each new day would be a new occurrence, so we could certainly continue to find and remind individuals of the illegal activity. My fire chief has not made me aware that we have any ongoing issues, but I will take that opportunity to reach out and make sure that we don't have individuals that are contravening these bylaws and restrictions at this time.
So it's my understanding that if you are, if, if you don't cooperate right away in dousing an illegal fire, that you can get an $1,150 ticket immediately for everyone that is in attendance at the fire, and that should you start a forest fire, the fines go to between $10,000 to $100,000. And so if you've got like five of your friends over for a beach fire and, and the fire department rolls up and says, put it out, and you say, well, why should I? Well, that's enough for you to get like over $5,000 worth of fines there. So I hope the public gets the idea. Director Lee, you have something else?
Yes, we, we do have, in our area, we do have some people that continue to do, start fires and do it again because they're out on the beach, and they say, I'm not harming anything. So they wait till you go away and then do it again. So that's the kind of thing that's quite frustrating, and perhaps if we could suggest that it might cost them a lot of money, they would stop it at that point. So that's all I was looking for.
I would imagine they could get fined for every incidence.
Is, is that suggestion that you just put, is that in writing somewhere, Chair?
Oh, the, the fine for?
Everybody?
Everybody, yes, yeah, yeah, it's in the act. Yeah.
It's provincial.
It's a provincial act.
Thank you.
And, yeah, it applies to everybody that's at the fire. Nothing, nothing. Nobody's got, oh.
Last call.
Oh, okay, I see that. Last call for this one, and I'm going to move on to communications. There are no communications. New business? There's no new business? Oh, a general question from our director from Seashell. I was getting there, I was getting there. It was a long walk, I know, but yeah, Director Inkster, go ahead.
Thanks. The first item, little confusion, who votes on the first item on the agenda? A little bit of confusion there because we're, municipals vote on that, we're basically tax, asking, requiring the.
Four point one, are you talking about?
Yeah, we're asking the world to tax themselves.
CAO, do you have an answer for that?
So.
Committee, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, exactly. So it could be either, you could just vote just the service participants in board, it would be all directors because it's related to a contract. So either or.
Okay. I'm going to look for some guidance on this.
You're good.
Should I?
You asked a question, you answered it.
Yep, not on this one, but I have our intrepid reporter Connie online.
Motion to adjourn, then questions.
Excellent, that's what I wanted to know. Okay, so we're at the adjournment portion of our agenda. There's a motion to adjourn. There's a secondar, all in favor, very good. All right, now I'm going to turn to the gallery and see if anyone has any questions. And I believe Connie, do you have any questions for the committee this morning?
Thank you, Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Yeah, I can, thank you.
No questions from me. Thank you very much for a very well-run meeting.
Oh, thank you. Okay, good. Well, that's it, and we've got a board meeting this afternoon to prepare for, so I'll see you all at the next one. We can adjourn this. Thank you.